Good evening, it's 6:00 PM and we will call the regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission being held on Thursday, March 6th to order. And we'll begin with a roll call. Mari Sel, if you would please.
Commissioner Woolley?
Present.
Commissioner Pro will not be here tonight. Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Present.
Sheriff Frost?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and we acknowledge that we have Kathy Adam, our liaison from the council here. We appreciate her being here, and our town manager and our town attorney is here with us too, and we always appreciate them being here as well. If you'd all please stand, our vice chair, Chairman, Vice Chair DeRosa is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me as we celebrate the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start this evening with a call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone in attendance here this evening that would like to address the commission? Online, I see we have a hand raised. Courtney Ramirez, did you want to speak in call to the public?
Alright. Hi guys, yeah, just in case something happens and I'm not able to speak, I think it's a public hearing tonight for the project on Butte. So, you know, this is all of Florence. As much as we all are wanting to kind of put the brakes on the building north of the Gila, we want to put the brakes on building south of the Gila in the downtown area until we can get our roads under control. I understand that this property is owned by the Merrill family, and we all know that our roads are a really big deal right now. I asked the last developer in the last meeting if they would be so kind and put some money to improve the roads around here. So for any future developer wanting to come in, we need roads north and south of the Gila. Many of us prefer that before the building happens. Don't think that's going to happen, but that's what a lot of us are wishing for. I was really sad to see that nobody even showed up to the neighborhood meeting. I didn't even know there was a neighborhood meeting. But I think it's really sad, either, you know, people just don't care, or just don't feel that their voices will be heard. But this is a lot more people coming into this little bitty town in the downtown area, and you know, a lot of us keep asking the questions, are we able to support all this growth with the lack of roads coming in? Dobson Farms there on the other side, Bisbee still building out. You know, there's just building all around, and we're all really worried about our roads. I'd also like to suggest to change the rules to allow these notices for these neighborhood meetings on developments to, you know, apply for the entire town, because these developments affect more than just the people within 300 feet. Is there any way that we can change that to notify the, you know, entire town on a social media post or something like that? That would be great. We all trust that you guys are going to do what's best for Florence, what's really best for Florence and the safety with our roads and such when these developers come knocking on our door. I'm a big no for this project until our roads get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only one online that has a hand raised. Anyone else again in the audience here that would like to address us this evening? Okay, with that, we'll close the call to the public and move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of the minutes from the regular meeting conducted on February 20th. Commission members, any additions, subtractions, edits to those minutes?
Mr. Chair, just some typographical errors that I'm sure you've caught and have taken care of with staff.
I didn't send anything into staff this time, so I... Mari Sel, probably the ones that were referred to is on the, on page one, the third line from the bottom, there's the word "four" behind Felix Road. It probably doesn't need to be there. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll wait till you get those out. So, page one of the minutes, third line from the bottom, about in the middle where it says widening Felix Road four from, I think "four" can be omitted. And then on page two, second line from the bottom, Felix Road is spelled F-I-L-E-X.
That one I have fixed.
Got that one? Okay. Okay, so that one was turned in. And then I only had one other comment, and it was just more of an addition than anything else, it should be on page six. The sixth paragraph, which starts, Mr. Baxter stated that the plan is have a concrete pathway that will be eight to 10 feet in width, and the clarifier on that is that it would extend from the pedestrian underpass to the existing eight to 10 foot wide path that exists in the community already, because there's a, in that space right now is just a decomposed granite path. Those were the ones that I caught. Anything else, commission members?
Mari Sel, you got my, did you go back and look at that page five at the bottom?
Yes, so I added the, or I changed the Felix, and then I added the part about having a place for the landscape vehicles behind the ball fields.
Anything else? So with those edits, do we have a motion for approval? So moved?
Second.
Okay.
With corrections, sorry.
With those corrections, we have a motion for approval by commission member Woolley, and a second by Vice Chair DeRosa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You had four ayes there. Mari Sel, thank you. New Business 6A, this is a presentation slash public hearing slash recommendation for approval slash approval with conditions or denial of a rezoning from rural agricultural, agricultural, excuse me, RA-10 to planned unit development known as Westland Village. This is PZ-24-36. Is there a staff presentation on this? And Mari Sel, while you're doing that, let me, what I got in my packet, there was no information from staff or the development team. My packet starts with a very huge traffic analysis, but there's nothing in here from the...
Nothing from the staff report?
There's no staff report, there's nothing, there's no...
Our printer strikes again, I apologize.
I'm sure we'll hear it all tonight, so... Oh, good.
Let's see if I can show this. Yeah, go ahead and give him yours.
I was able to deduce a lot because of the completeness of the traffic impact analysis. Still missed out on some of the other stuff. Hey, thank you, sir.
Was the rest of your packet complete, though?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Tonight, we bring to you the planned unit development that's known as Westland Village. This site is located off the southwest corner of Butte Ave and Centennial Park Ave. It's about a 40 acre site that is currently zoned as RA-10 or Rural Agriculture. The applicant applied to rezone it to a planned unit development in order to complete the uses that they were looking to do, and they saw that as the best way to go about that process. That includes 27 acres of that land being used for single-family homes, and then the other 13 acres they proposed for multifamily. Now, the process in review for the preliminary PUD, we did go through a pre-application meeting, and an application was submitted after that. The neighborhood meeting did take place, that was on February 19th, and then the item before the neighborhood meeting did go to the TAC or the Technical Advisory Committee for staff review. It actually went to another one before that, but I'll get into that later. And then there was public notice for these hearings at planning and zoning, and then for the future at town council. The things that the town was looking to review... Are all things within the preliminary stage of this PUD. So nothing in this PUD right now is completely finalized, because this is a very preliminary proposal of what they're looking to do with the land. So first, we're looking at locational information, where is it at, what's around it, and existing already in use. What are some physical constraints to the site? What kind of roads are nearby? What kind of land challenges, topography things are there? And then we take a look at the proposed site development, what they're looking to do, and if that also coincides with the things around it. Then we also look at the circulation system, since traffic has become a very big deal, so of course we're looking to see what kind of improvements need to be done, and what kind of access points need to occur, not only just for traffic, but also for fire safety. We also take a look at the open space areas that they have and provide, what's nearby? Is it isolated like some of the other PEDs, or does it have amenities nearby that they can take advantage of? Another thing is its relationship to the surrounding land uses. Are we close to similar uses, or are we a little bit farther out? And then of course, the very end, we're looking to see if the proposed land use is not only compatible with the community around it, but also the goals of the general plan. Just to kind of give you a quick overview of this, I know the applicant will go over once I'm completing my presentation here, but to the north, you have your residential ranchettes, your single-family ranchettes that are on larger acreages. To the east, you have Sunrise Estates, which is another single-family home community. And then to the south, you have Bisbee Ranch, which is a more recent single-family home community. And then to the west is a undeveloped 40 acre parcel that is part of the Territory Square that is for future uses, not quite known, but I'm sure we'll figure out in the future. Town staff did have his technical advisory committee meeting, we had two. So the first one took place on November 20th of 2024. That was a town staff-only technical advisory committee, just to understand the project, what is it about, what are some concerns we're already starting with, and that those comments went towards that first review that we submitted out to the applicant. Now, the second technical advisory committee was, meeting was held on February 12th of 2025, and that's when we took back other concerns, and the applicant brought back their changes that they made based on the first review. In those meetings, some of the, in that second meeting, some of the concerns we did have was whether they could just do hard zoning with what they were planning to do, and also we had concerns about the Bisbee Road coming up through the south, and how that acted as a collector's street for that community, how it could be different for this one and interacted with it. Because of that tack meeting, so this was the initial development that they had come forward with, and that main concern was here on that south end, you see, you have homes that are right on that curve, and coming out of that, where everything is collecting onto Bisbee Road and that Bisbee community, coming up into that single-family home. We saw potential danger there, so we asked if they could change it to better, for better access and better safety in general, and they came up with this current development, which has a three-way down at the bottom, so it's not as much of a hazard as we saw before, but it's still giving access to Butte, it's still giving access to Bisbee, and it gives potential for that multifamily and single-family. Public participation, we had the neighborhood meeting on, that's supposed to be February 19th, not January. February 19th at the Community Center from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. No members of the public did attend that. There wasn't notice that went out to the 300 people, 300 feet of the property to neighbors, and that was mailed to the residents. The applicants mailed a separate notice to the Plannings, for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council public hearings, that was also 300 feet of the site. In addition, they had the sign to advertise these public hearings, and also a display ad was published in the panel dispatch. Staff has not received any comments on the item. We did have some questions that came through, just asking about what is this project about, what's going to be in it, and what are some meetings in the future? That concludes my presentation. I will now relinquish control to the applicant, so they can provide theirs.
Mr. Chairman, before we hit, before we hear from the applicant, I have a couple of questions, Mari, can I ask them now, or do you rather I hold them?
I think it helps clarify things, why don't we just do that real quickly while this transition's happening?
Thank you. So, Mari, the 40 acres set aside by territory, to become Territory Square, who owns that? Does Merrill also own that, or does the town own that?
The town does not own that, it is actually owned by Harold Kristen, those are the winery, so it is not the town, and it is not Merrill Ranch.
And the other question was, I thought we had changed our notice requirement from 300 feet to 600 feet?
No, we have not passed that, but we had brought it forward to see if that's something that, that we wanted to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis, for the record, if you just please introduce yourself when you start your presentation.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, my name is Greg Davis, I'm a land planner. My company's called I Plan Consulting, and our address is 3317 South Higley Road in the town of Queen Creek. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. This is my 25th year as a planner, and this is my first time in Florence, so hopefully you won't be too rough on me, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight representing this project here, so... I think Mari did an excellent job with the presentation, talked about the project itself, which I'll get into, but wanted to just first start off with, you know, what the intent of this project is. We know that this project may not be ripe for development today, it's really more about laying the groundwork for the future, and what this area may be in the future. The process to get there takes a while, there's no builder lined up ready to come build this today, so what we're doing now is just simply reaching out to the town, letting you know what our concept is, what our vision is, and try to work through the issues, so that by the time we are ready to build it, it is a smooth process. So, when we start with our development intent, we just, we start with the basics. What does the town want to see here? You know, the town does have a voter-approved general plan for this area, and this area is identified as town center. So town center is a mix of different uses, commercial, multifamily, single-family, et cetera. So that kind of set the stage for what we wanted to put down on this land for land uses. But then we also talked with staff about, well, what's kind of happening in the more immediate area? You know, we know downtown is growing, and we know Territory Square is a concept that everyone's excited about, although the timeline's unknown about it. And so we kind of saw this project as being a catalyst for helping both of those projects expand, both downtown and Territory Square. It's bringing rooftops, it's bringing different variety of housing types, et cetera, which help exacerbate or accelerate that type of development. We do that through bringing roads, road improvements through adjacent to our property, infrastructure expansions, and just activity. The more activity you have in an area, the more investors see that as a growing area and want to be part of it, and it snowballs into more development. The aspect of the density of the project, we are proposing two different types of homes, a single-family and a medium-density residential, and the intent is to bring in the rooftops that will help the commercial development to happen. Most of the conversations I've had over the years in this area has been a lack of commercial services in this area, and that's one of the things that helps make that happen, is by bringing rooftops, that's when the commercial developers will come in, so this, that was one of our intents to help make that happen here. And the last one that I'll talk about now is just simply the variety of housing. There's not a lot of variety of housing in this whole region, it's pretty much the single-family, just a lot size, it's different. And so part of the proposal is to include a project that may be multifamily, or it may be ownership, but it is a higher density, and it is a different product type, and I'll touch on that as, as part of my presentation. And then, we want to make a project that's compatible with the existing area. We know that there's existing homes out here, existing families, so we want to try to develop something that's incompatible, both in the near term as well as in the long term, and so that's what drove this design. And so when you place the plan onto the zoning map, you can see more of a contextual map of what we were looking at. We have zoning on there, so we have a lot of single-family to our north, you know, east and south. And then we have a kind of a feature unknown, but a mixed-use entity development that's going to happen to our west and northwest. And so when we lay out the project, that's how we decided where the single-family and where the MDR would go. So we have the development pressures of single-family to our east, west and south, and more intense development happening, future happening to our west and northwest. And so as we look at compatibility, that's why the single-family portion is on that side of the project, so it's adjacent to where the existing single-family development is now for the most part along those boundaries. And the medium-density residential product is more, where the more intense development's going to be in the future, to the west and northwest. So that kind of creates a transition of intensity from the less intense to the more intense, and that's the guiding principle of why we chose the proposal and the land uses the way we have. Now, we look at barriers, we look at existing homes, existing lifestyles, how can we mitigate against, you know, potential nuisances? And so, one of those barriers is roads. So we, roads act as a transition, and they also act as buffers. We'll, we'll have roads on three sides of this project, to the north, east and west, and then we also have landscape buffers that were baked into this PUD. We have the traditional 20 feet along roads along the east, north and west, and then a 30 foot along the south boundary there. And then for the MDR, which is probably the more intense use, we're proposing 40-foot buffers where that is adjacent to single-family. So that's along our north boundary with these existing single-family across the street, as well as internally along our east and south of the MDR parcel. You can see more landscaping there. And the intent is, is because we don't know exactly what density that's going to develop at, there's going to be a built-in buffer that helps mitigate any nuisances that could taste, take place across, across those property lines. From an access standpoint, we have three points of access for the single-family, north on Butte, east on Centennial Park, and then south on Bisbee Road, which I believe the name of it to the south. As Mari mentioned, we, our original plan did not have that collector road unloaded. We weren't aware that that was kind of acting as a collector road, but staff brought that to our attention, and we checked with our traffic engineer about what would be the best way to handle that, and he proposed that we align that road with a quarter-mile alignment, which is why it jogs there to the left, and it has the additional benefit of acting as a transition from whatever develops to the west. So there's a built-in buffer separation that'll occur in that area. And it also helps propose more access points for the project. So the MDR parcel, for instance, can access off of the new road along the west part of the property and travel north or south versus having to go out to Butte to the north. So in all, we have five points of access, and by connecting Bisbee Road to Butte, we're actually improving the overall circulation of that area, because right now, you know, Centennial Park isn't going through down to Adamsville, doesn't sound like there's a solution on the table to make that happen, and so this helps make that connection where it doesn't exist today. And in regards to traffic, you know, we, we did prepare a full traffic analysis as part of this project. I'm glad it was in your packets, and sorry, that's the only thing that was in your packets, that'd be a boring read for you, but we did look at that, we know that that's an issue with any project we do in a developing town. You know, roads in this area are either, are brought in by developers or taxes, and people don't like taxes, so it's usually the development that ends up building it. And so when we're coming in as a developer, we need to look at what are the recommendations that the TIA is going to have, and then we work with the town on what's the best solution. So, the TIA looks at the more area context, that's what all those circles are, are intersections in the area, and then it'll look at that from a right-of-way standpoint, what right-of-way needs to be given as part of this project here, what improvements need to be given, lanes, sidewalks, gutter, streetlights, et cetera. And then if you are having entrances to projects that develop traffic, you need to have dedicated turn lanes or medians, et cetera, so that when you have two-lane streets, you're not backing up traffic, which is, you know, the situation that exists now on Butte. So the second aspect of the traffic study is looking at how the project impacts the existing traffic in that area. And they do that through what's called level of service analysis. In the traffic report, there's tables and tables of it, so this is just a summary of those findings. And basically, what they do is they'll look at all these intersections and say, today, under peak times, rush hour, whatever that may be, how are these operating? And anything that's operating at a level D or higher is acceptable. So right now, all the intersections that you see on the map operate at a level of service B, which is really good. Obviously, there's not a whole bunch of traffic out there today in this immediate area. Now, when the project is built, and, and this is our project in particular, all those same intersections operate at a level C or better. So a couple of them do get worse, but they're still two levels above what would be considered needing to be mitigated. And we also had them look at the long term of what happens when the larger area develops, whether that's Territory Square, build out of Bisbee Ranch, et cetera. And so that looks at a timeframe of five to 10 years out, so 2030, 2035. And even in that situation, when you've taken all that ambient development and future development, it's a level of service D or more. And if you do look at the tables, you can see, it's really only a couple places where you get that level of service D, and it's really only in peak times. The standard average median traffic for this area, it is acceptable in terms of traffic mitigation. The last thing I wanted to talk about as part of this project is the product. Well, you know what, we know you'll see the product, we are only asking for the initial zoning approval today. Both of these projects will have to come in later, whether it be a preliminary plat or a site plan. And so you'll see the product, but as part of our intent, wanted to make sure that we represented what this project was meant to be, because we did get quite a few questions early on about, is this going to be subsidized or affordable housing? And I think those are just kind of trigger words that are associated with the multifamily. And so it's really important for us to explain that, that's not the intent here. The multifamily portion may not even be multifamily, it is not intended to be apartments, it's not, we're, we're capping the density on that, so it can't be that type of development. But from a single-family standpoint, you can expect a lot like what you see now at Bisbee Ranch, you know, you'll have your one and two-story designs, attached garages, tile roofs, et cetera. So something you're very familiar with, that you can go out and see today for the majority of the project. And here's a couple photos that are drawings that illustrate that type of product. And then probably the more important one to this conversation is what our intent is for the MDR parcel. So we're proposing a density range of six to 12 units per acre. Just for comparison, I think Bisbee Ranch is around four units per acre, four and a half, so it starts a little above that and it goes up to 12. Your typical three-story apartment building is going to be 18 to 25, so this doesn't allow that type of development. What we're going for here is really more of a town home, patio home, something with a little more density, something with an alternate lifestyle, that's a better price point, so that other members of the community can own something or rent something in this area, and that they don't have to just move up to a single-family home. There's quite a few people that don't want a single-family home, and the maintenance and everything associated with that, so this offers that opportunity, but we don't know exactly what it is going to be yet. But we do know that it'll be in that range of density. It will have garages, it will have concrete tile roofing, the quality of design will be very similar to what the single-family homes are. And so when we include a couple examples of this, these are projects that are being built, that I'm associated with in Queen Creek and in Mesa. So you can see a town homes on the left side there. So you can see a town homes on the left side there. They're about eight to 10 to 12 units per acre. The bottom one's probably closer to 12. And then the picture on the right is a project we're doing in Gilbert, which is standalone and duplex homes, but you can see they live and look like single-family homes. And the town homes do as well. So we're affording a different lifestyle that isn't apartment living. It's something that people can feel more akin to single-family, more complimentary to what the existing housing stock of the town is. So just in summary, again, we feel this project is compliant with the general plan. We do think it conforms to the goals and policies of the existing category for that area. We do see it as a catalyst for what the town is hoping to accomplish in this area between downtown and Territorial Square. We feel it brings more housing and variety to the community. We feel it will ultimately improve traffic situation because of the road improvements or the in-loop payments that can be placed elsewhere if the town has that priority. And lastly, we feel it's compatible with the immediate area. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commission members, questions, please?
Just a couple. First off, what's your vision on the build-out?
Commissioner Woolley, do you mean time-wise?
Yeah. I know it's not ballpark, but just give us an idea.
I think the single family could probably be developed in the next probably three to four years. That's realistic. I don't know if it will be, but that would be. The MDR parcel, I think, is more contingent upon growth, employment growth of what happens, probably to Territorial Square, but maybe even downtown. So that's probably more of a, you know, five-plus-year timeframe, in my opinion.
Have you had any discussions with town staff at this point of what potentially, let me start that over again. We have issues with roads here, okay? And I'm not sure when these traffic studies are being done. Anybody who lives here, whether you live on the north side of the river or the south side of the river, knows that our hardest time to travel anywhere is Monday through Friday, early in the morning, late in the evening, okay? I find it hard to believe that these traffic studies are finding these levels to be as low as they're coming forward to us, when we see people sitting in traffic for a half hour waiting for a light change, okay? So my question is, where are we at? Should we approve this zone change? Where are we at with the discussion on what you guys are going to do to help Butte and all these other roads that connect to that environment? Because if you drive out there right now, I don't care if you call them A, B, C or D, or whatever you call them, they're not adequate for the traffic we have now. So I'm sorry if that sounds negative, but I don't know how they do these traffic studies. They should really go out there and actually drive the area and see what they look like. Where, if your higher-density houses go in, how many units was that for the higher-density?
It was potentially 1.58.
Okay. So according to Google, sorry, I used Google for this, you're looking at 1.75 to two cars per household in that density, okay? So we're looking at anywhere from 500 to 650 increases just within that small development. So hypothetically, the way the roads are situated right now, they do not support those approximately 600 vehicles. So has there been any discussion at this point, what you guys are willing to do to help us make those roads connected to your community safer for the build-out, not to start building for when it's done? That's what I, that's the question I've got.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Woolley, I haven't been involved in those discussions, other than the fact that it's understood that we're going to be responsible for mitigating our traffic. Typically, that's done just along our frontage, you know, two lanes, three lanes, whatever it is. But a lot of times, that, those lane miles can be shifted elsewhere depending on where the issue is. The traffic study, the analysis that was done, is based on, you know, coming out and seeing road conditions for those timeframes, but it is that more localized area. And if there's greater issues from a community standpoint, we have more of a breakdown in transportation in other areas, then, you know, this project, the funds from this project can be used in that aspect. And of course, we're willing to help. To build this project, we need the community to be running and be functional, otherwise no one's going to want to live here. So we have, we have the incentive to help you guys as much as what either, as far as the function and how that happens, we're open to have that conversation, but we haven't really got into it because this is just the zoning stage. We have another year of work before we'd even get to a point where we'd think about, you know, being able to build anything. But we're open to it, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Davis, I, now that, between your two presentations, I have a better understanding of why the figure two and figure three are different in the roads. And I'm not sure why the multifamily is later. Do we not feel like there's a need for multifamily housing at this time in Florence?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, at least the feedback we've gotten from potential developers is that they wouldn't be ready to build this, you know, within the two years that we could be able to get permits for it. There may be a demand for it, but the feedback we've gotten is no. The other thing is that right now, there's, it's a lot, a lot of risk for a multifamily developer to come, say they're going to build in the community, a lot of political risk and a lot of timing. By the time we would get to a permit, the market could totally change. And so until we have something for them to say, to hang their hat on and say, okay, there is, you know, 13 acres that we could develop, we'll commit to it, we'll enter escrow and get done, you know, a lot of them aren't going to, they're not going to come up and say, we're going to do it. So we know that there, there is going to be demand, we just don't know when. And it could be today, but without the zoning in place, we'll never probably find out.
Okay, fair enough. In here, there's talk of Territorial Square. This is the first time I've been aware in the five years I've lived here that Territorial Square was south of the winery. So it refers to it as an event center. Do we know what that's going to be? If it's not going to be housing, it's going to be an event center, is that something that's only going to be occupied during the day, evenings or weekends or what? Do we, have you had any guidance on that, on your next-door neighbor?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we haven't. I looked in the submitted documents to get a feel for what the town's application is, what was sold to the town about the long-term vision, mixed use, the various different uses on the property, but as far as the specifics, I don't know personally. Maybe Mari knows, she looks like she wants to speak about it.
Plans we have heard about for that parcel to the west are, we've heard bridal cottages, a community center, or some other type of event space. We haven't gotten any further than those kind of ideas, and that's all I can speak on that one.
Okay, so we could possibly double the amount of houses in this whole area there south of Butte, and that's fine. I just, just curious if we had any, at least some vision from someone. There's a reference in here to two gates. Are we talking about a gated community somewhere?
Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, so the multifamily or the MDR parcel are typically gated. So we put that language in there just to make sure that if that ultimately becomes the case, you guys are aware of it. The one gate, I think that was mentioned, would be the primary one. At that time, it would be off of Butte. Now it would probably be off of the new north-south street. Secondary gate would just be for emergency-only access. And we had discussions with the town staff about that, about having the opticon systems, et cetera, so that it would be accessible by emergency services. The single family, we do not envision to be gated.
Okay. Let's see, next. On page four of the, of the TIA, which has had a lot of good information in it, talked about emergency. That's the emergency gate that you're talking about from the multifamily area?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Now I'm beginning to kind of see a picture. It's a little hard when I just read it cold, so. There's a, page four of the TIA talks about access C. Now that's up Centennial Parkway? Is that where I'm understanding access C would be?
Commissioner, I don't have that in front of me. If you ask a question, I can probably answer it. It sounds right. It's a tertiary access point because Territorial Square does not go south from our point, so it would dead-end at that location.
Yeah, Centennial Parkway is going to essentially come down and enter your east, your east side towards the south. And following up on that, will there be connection to 16th?
16th is...
The east of there in the existing neighborhood?
So we will be connecting just to Centennial Park Place, but I believe there is an existing connection into that neighborhood from Centennial Park Place just north of our access point.
I've driven that, and yeah, there's, that's where their street comes down and turns on 16th and doesn't continue south. There's essentially empty land there. So I was just curious, some of your drawings show that there would appear to be a connection to 16th.
Yeah, I think the, our original vision was that that road would continue south. And we'll, we are proposing the dedication for if and when that ever is something the town wants to see. But at this point, our revised plan stops it north of our, our south boundary, but south of their south access point to the east.
Let's see. We're missing on page 23, figures 10.5 and 10.6 that are referred to of the TIA. Do we know where those are?
I'm not aware of what you have in front of you, if it's missing from everything or just your versions.
Let's see here if I can find it. Not everything was numbered very well this time. Usually I can go to the packet and find exactly the page, but when I was viewing this, it talks about 10.5 and a 10.6. So we might need that later on.
Sure.
When we come back. So let's note that lack, unless, Mari, do you know where that might be, by any chance?
I couldn't tell you if that's a printing error or if that, if it's actually not there.
There's a mention in here of a side-entry garage. Does that apply to the single-family houses or does that in the multifamily?
Sir, that would be part of the single-family. And it's just, if we want to provide, a lot of times we try to mix up the street scape by not having all front-facing garage doors. And if we do that, we usually ask for leniency in the setback so we can get people into the garage from the front. So yes, that would, that would apply to the single-family only.
But I think based upon what I can see here and your width of houses, there's no way you're going to put a driveway up and allow for a turning lane into the side of any of these lots. Is that correct?
It's good, very difficult to do it. Sometimes they do share driveways between two lots where the garages will face each other for that intent. So we didn't want to take it off the table. We think the more options that the builders have, the better product that ultimately results. And so that's why it's in there.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing that in the next presentation, okay? There's a minimum backyard spacing that's in these houses. Some of them are pretty small, like 10-foot, is that what I'm seeing on some of these
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, our rear setback on the single-family is 12 feet, which I believe matches the R1-6.
Okay, 12-foot. Let's see. Oh. On the gated community, I assume the fire department can always make their way through those gates. They have the trucks that can do it, but the police usually don't want to do that. Will they all have access? You're going to have knockboxes at the gates, or what are you going to do?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so we were told you guys use the opticon system. So that's what we've put in the reports, but we're, we use whatever emergency service asks us to use.
Okay. And I'll kind of finish by saying, I really appreciate the TIA looking at future loads from developments that aren't even there with CD farms and things like that, even going down as far as Plant Road and Adamsville Road. So that kind of gives us a better idea of what the town needs to be doing in the future as well. So thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. Appreciate your questions.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for being here this evening. You mentioned that the multi, multifamily units, the area's going to be gated. So does that mean there'll be an HOA and then who will maintain those streets?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, so there'll be an HOA for both projects, the single-family as well as the multifamily. The multifamily, if it develops as a condominium, it'll be an HOA. If it's for rent, that'll be a POA, a Property Owners Association, that will maintain everything from the driveway entrance interior to the project. The single-family portion is not proposed to be gated, so those will be public streets. But the MDR parcel will all be private streets and taken care of by the community.
It's nice to see a mix of town homes and patio homes in the area. I think it's something that market would be very receptive to. Item number four in the recommendations is a waiver of claims for diminution in value. Could somebody please explain that to me? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, so that's the standard in Arizona. In Arizona, most municipalities have a form of waiver because when a town imposes a land use regulation on private property, if someone wants to make a claim under one of the statutes to say that it diminished their property value, then that's something the town would have to deal with. So it's typical and it's been standard, I think, with Florence for quite some time that developers upon application actually sign that waiver, saying they're not going to make that kind of statutory claim. Of course, there are other claims that can be made by developers against towns, including constitutional taking claims, but this waives that statutory claim. And it's, I think it's standard practice pretty much throughout Arizona.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Tonight's meeting is about rezoning this property so you can resell it, so you can find a merchant builder to come in and, and build a product that, that can be sold.
Correct.
So the other questions I have is something really that you wait till we have a plat in front of us. I don't think they're appropriate for this meeting. Has to do with the architecture and design and that, that's not what tonight's meeting is about. So I'll hold those questions until further. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm really surprised that some of my cohorts didn't question PUD. And I saw that Mari brought it up, and the TAC is, why would we even want a PUD? And I don't know if that was you, Mr. Davis, or someone else that talked about flexibility. And in my mind, a PUD is something that should provide great value, not only to the developer, but also something intrinsic to the community that provides value and something for the community. And we've been burned a bit by PUDs that are formed and then nothing's done with them for some time and development standards changed, but they're locked into the old way of doing business. So I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to move forward on something that's, where a PUD is desired. And I don't know if Mari, if you want to talk to that, or Mr. Davis, or town attorney or who, but I'm really curious on this one, so why we want to support that.
I'd be glad to share why we proposed it. And, and Mr. Chairman, obviously, we've dealt with PUDs, PUDs for a long time. And you're right, some of the PUDs that are around for 20, 30 years and they, they're really not meant to be implemented that long. So that certainly isn't our intent, coming before you tonight with that. We looked at the zoning of the property, and because we're trying to bring in something more unique as far as the MDR parcel, just really didn't fit into your category. So we couldn't make the project work under the current code for those districts. But we also started to get a lot of questions about, well, you know, we've been told this and you show, you show us these pictures and you build something totally different. And so PUD has another function that's important to the community, and that's reliance of the town and the, and the adjacent residents of, hey, we want to know what's being built here. We want to know the details. We don't want to just give you carte blanche to zone, R1-6 or whatever it may be, R2. We want to have some say in it so that, because this is going to affect our lives living adjacent to it. And that's why when I touched on issues like buffers, you know, 40 feet of landscaping for the larger lots across the street, that's important to those folks so they know they're not going to have two-or-story homes closer to them. There's going to be a better separation. And that can only be done through a PUD as far as, you know, commitment-wise. And so we think that the project is unique enough to warrant that, and we're not asking for... We're not asking for a lot of deviations and we understand we're not giving the town a lot of extra things either. So, we think it's a fair compromise, but the other reasons for the PUD we think are worthwhile in this case, and that's why we proposed it.
And go ahead, Mari, I see you want to speak.
Yeah, from the sta, the standpoint of the town, we did give them the option, like, this is how you could do a hard zone. Well, this is how you could do a hard zoning in terms of this could just be a single-family residential and then this part could be multifamily residential or R two, something that would fit. However, a lot of the code standards didn't quite meet what they were trying to do in terms of the multifamily. And a lot of it would require variances instead of a, a plan, in a planned unit of development, you can work in that flexibility without having to go back to multiple meetings to get these variances for the changes that they're looking to do for their development. So, we gave them the option and it was like, you can do a hard zoning, we'll work with you through that process, or you could go through the PUD process and we'll also go through that. I think a lot of the spurn from previous PUDs has also been in general where they are located and also the development agreements that came with them. In this one, there is no development agreement that's with this item that would have more of the developer's advantage than the town's. In addition, ooh, I had the point in my head. At this time, we're more aware of what will be better for the town in terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as staff. We're a lot more seasoned in going through what's here and what's around. And I also think this one has the benefits of being part of a already-built community and not being isolated in other places.
Very good. AJ, it looks like you want to speak as well.
I do. So, yes, the discussion of hard zoning or moving forward with a, a planned unit of development proposal was discussed. The, the hards, another hard zone option could be that those conditions may be applied to a hard zone saying, okay, it's going to be zoned multifamily residential. However, there's going to be a series of conditions so that we know specifically what may, may be built on that property. So, both of those options were discussed with the developer. At this point, the developer chose to proceed with a PUD. So, but both items were discussed. It, it probably wouldn't be impossible to go hard zoning and go the other direction, but this is the direction the developer chose to move forward at this point.
Oh, please, Cliff.
I might as well throw, thank you, Mr. Chair, throw my two cents in. So, I mean, consistent with everyone, what everyone has said, I mean, the PUD or the planned area development concept, it's adding flexibility for both your density, but also the design. And I think there was some indication that, and this is a perfect candidate for that kind of situation where the development, as far as the density and the design might cause variances, variances in Arizona are very hard to get technically. They can't be self-imposed. And so, I think it's common for both municipalities and developers to use that flexibility to try and pick up some of the improved design elements and thereby avoid needing a variance or multiple variances, particularly when you're dealing with multifamily.
Okay, just a two-second summary then. It sounds like staff has weighed the pros, the cons, the ups, the downs, and they simply believe that the, for what you want to accomplish for the community, that this is the best way to do it in this situation.
I would say that this was the developer weighing both options and they believe this is their best path forward.
And, and we believe the same, best professional staff.
We believe that the developer had two options and this is the option they chose.
Is this the best option in the, in the benefit of the city, of the town?
I, I think ultimately when we get to the stage of the process, when we're talking the final, the final PUD and the final development plan, that we will get greater flexibility moving down the right of PUD because we would have to think long and hard through all the standards that apply to the hard zoning in the town of Florence to see where they may fit, where they may fit, what conditions we would include on the hard zoning change. And as, as Consul mentioned, a variance would be fairly complicated, especially here in the state of Arizona. So, considering it all and considering some of the already, some of the initial things that have been proposed in terms of increased buffering between the proposed single-family to the east, the multifamily to the west, I believe it's a forty-foot landscape buffer between those.
Forty foot.
Forty, that, that would be well above what the town's hard zoning would be between an RA six zoning and a, and a multifamily residential zoning. So, the, there are, we are, we are realizing some additional buffering requirements already. And as we go to final PUD, we're going to see more refinement as we begin to talk about the development standards, the standards that we're expecting for the single-family residential. So, weighing it all, again, this was the developer's choice, but again, if we want flexibility in design and we want to commit the developer to more and more of items, this is, this is the better way to go.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for is, I mean, this, we've, we've been able to review this for days where you've been obviously doing this for a couple of months and I just want to make sure that professional staff has weighed through all of these things and believe that this is the best way to go for our community. Super, okay. Please.
I just have one quick question, probably for AJ. If we were to approve the zoning tonight, what is our protection to say that six months from now, they come back and say, well, we want our PU to be, PUD to be predominantly higher density now and less single-family homes? It, it's a great plan right now, but what's going to protect us from them flipping it on us once we approve the PUD?
I, I guess I would start with trust. The developer standing before us this evening making a proposal, if this proposal as submitted is acted on, and this would be a recommendation to the town council, that we would expect that the, the same packet of information is forwarded to the town council for the review and consideration. So, we will have the minutes recording what we agreed to and discussed tonight. That information would be then recommended to the town council. And so, a, a lot of, so it is the developer's packet at this point. It's our trust in what he's committing to the town of Florence that would allow for that. In addition, in the staff report, item number two begins to talk about the density. So, I believe there's a total of five conditions or stipulations. Is that correct, Mari?
Yep.
That, at least that if we added that to the motion to send a recommendation, if that's the pleasure of the commission, that, that would also be included. So, we are stipulating or offering can, recommended conditions i- is, to, I guess, reaffirm what the developer's presenting to the town at this point.
Okay. And it just comes from historically, PUDs favor the builder or the developer. They don't favor the town. You can look at any city, any government, and you're going to see a PUD always favors the, the developer. I, I, we just need to make sure, we've seen it already with a couple of PUDs, that they present this beautiful picture, but yet we approve it and then they come back two, three years later, oh, no, now we want to do this, you know? And once they have that PUD, it's, it, it opens up to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for either AJ or for Mr. Mattis. You're in the process of negotiating a PUD with this developer. What takes precedent, code one fifty or our general plan?
What will ultimately take precedent is the planned unit development document that's approved at the final stage. Likely, it will include its own development standards and guidelines. It will include discussions of landscape buffering and things like that. So, when the final PUD is approved by the town of Florence, that will be the governing document. Now, that document may make references to chapter one fifty in, to say that, okay, we're not going to discuss this. The, the applicable town of Florence codes at the time of the approval of this PUD are applicable to this development, but ultimately it's going to be the P, the final PUD that is the governing zoning document of this forty-acre parcel.
I understand that. What is your guiding principle? Is it code one fifty or is it the general plan?
Can I ask?
Do you sit at the table to negotiate? What, what do you look towards for guidance? Do you look at code one fifty or do you look at just the general plan? Or is it a combination of both?
Are you asking when we review it, do we refer more to the general plan or to the code?
Well, when I, my understanding is we sit here this evening is that the town is negotiating a PUD with West, like, with, with Westland Village. If, if that, that's my understanding. Please, do we already have a PUD?
Ma'am, Vice Chair, so your general plan controls everything, okay? But it's general, right?
I understand that.
So, it sets out principles, policies that are general. The details of your PUD or your hard zoning fill in, fill in the blanks. So, I believe, you know, staff and the developer have confirmed that this is consistent with the general plan. If it's not consistent with the general plan, then typically what happens is there's a process to amend the general plan along with the zoning application, which is actually fairly common in Arizona. So, that was not determined as a necessity here, which means it's considered consistent with the general plan. The planning staff has pretty broad discretion in making that determination. But you are correct, the general plan controls the overall picture and then each portion of your either specific plans or your hard zoning, which includes your PUDs for a particular area, fills in the details.
So, there's no doubt that this fits the general plan as far as rezoning from agriculture to residential. It, it fits the plan. When you negotiate the PUD, how do you take into consideration code one fifty? Or do you?
I don't know if we're negotiating. There's a developer proposing to receive a PUD overlay in the broad sense of what's being proposed as this preliminary plan. So, as we make our way through the approval process to a final PUD, it's not a negotiation. They're going to make a presentation to us based on the requirements of chapter one fifty related to PUDs.
So, you've heard from this commission a number of times now that we've all spoken about amenities. This is not the evening to discuss amenities because it has nothing to do with the rezone. It's not a general plan issue, which is what's on the agenda this evening. But at some point in time, we're going to come down to a preliminary plat. The developer is going to tell us what amenities he's going to put in and what he's not going to put in. I, I don't want to have the conversation and, and look back and say, well, why didn't we ask for, why didn't the town ask for something? Why didn't we see what the, the builder might do to put in X or Y or Z? This, this isn't going to be a very large project, so I'm, I'm not looking for multi-generational facility, obviously. But we, we get to these points, PUDs have already been put in place, there are contracts we can't do anything about. This is an opportunity with a brand-new PUD to talk to the developer and say, what are your plans? How do we incorporate them? How do we get some things maybe the community needs or wants or could use before a PUD is signed? Because that's the final contract we have to live with. Yes, Mr. Mattis?
Mr. Chair, ma'am, Vice Chair. So, trying to put all that together, first of all, there's no, there is no agreement in this situation. This is just a rezoning application. The, the process of an agreement or development agreement is entirely separate process from this application. If we get into the, assuming this is rezoned, at some point there will be a preliminary plat and final plat. So, in both the preliminary plat and final plat process, however, there's only so much the town can ask for, okay? So, if you have a preliminary plat application, and I don't want to get into that because we haven't agendized that and that's not what this developer is asking for. But as far as asking for public spaces, you are limited in what you can ask for, especially in a preliminary plat. If they meet the conditions that are in your town code that's on the list, then it's essentially a ministerial approval, okay? When you get into negotiation, that deals more with the realm of development agreements, which is not what we're looking at in this body when we're dealing with the preliminary plat. So, I, I don't want to get into that because we're not agendized here for this.
I understand.
But this developer does not have a development agreement that he's following through with that has not been negotiated and we're not at the preliminary plat stage yet. And the preliminary plat is just that, extremely preliminary.
Mr. Mattis, you're, no argument, absolutely. But we also know that when a developer is granted a preliminary plat, it puts the wheels in motion for them to go and, and do extensive engineering work. And we're trying to avoid having the developer spend a lot of money on engineering. And again, that's a topic we should have offline so that...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's not agendized here and that's not this applicant's problem or issue.
I'm not talking to the applicant, I'm talking to you.
Yeah, and, and we should probably have the public hearing also opened at some point.
And, and I'm sure the chairman will do just that.
And, and, and I, I think you see kind of what we're wrestling with here because I, because we, we feel like we have inherited some PUDs that put us in a really weird situation to try to come with the betterment of the town. From his presentation tonight, I can see some really neat things, some of the buffers that he's talking about and some of its other stuff, that wasn't in our packet.
Yeah. Yeah. So... And, and not to interrupt, but I just want to caution the commission about frustrations that may be occurring in other situations and then addressing it with this applicant because this applicant is not involved in those. So, what's agendized here is the rezoning. And if we want to discuss those other items, we have to just separately agendize it for another time.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean to infer that. I just think that we, we are extra cautious.
Mr. Chairman, based on that, I'll go ahead and, and move that we approve the rezone. We have to open it to public, public hearing first.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Any, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will open a public hearing on this agenda item. Anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to this, may please come forward and you will have three minutes. Thank you very much, and please give us your name when you start.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Harold Christ. I am the owner of the Windmill Winery. I own the property immediately adjacent to the west of this property. There is a complete packet before the town that was all approved, maybe six, seven years ago. It showed a hotel, it showed a lot of other things that are in there, and that has been approved and stamped by the town. So, there's no mystery as to what we had intended to put into that property. The, the things that I'd like to address tonight, I guess, is, and let me, I, I'm not, I'm not doing this egotistically, but I'm the original developer of Gold Canyon Ranch. I did Copper Basin and Queen Creek. I did Pecan Creek and Queen Creek. So, I've been through this many, many times. And I'm looking at this plan and I'm seeing something that is not very creative. And I'm seeing something, we worked hard with my neighbor Guy Rankin back here, who's the farmer who adjoins me, to work on Territory Square to make it something different. To me, that's the most unique piece of property that's left in the state of Arizona to develop. And now we have this kind of out parcel that's come in. They did not apply to come into Territory Square. We did that with the forty acres that we have next door. I, I'm a longtime acquaintance and friend of, of the owner of the property. We attempted to buy that property from him originally. I, I don't know if they've done an archaeological study. When we did the archaeological study before, we were going to buy it. There are some archaeological issues that, and are part of that property. I'd like to see those addressed at some point. I don't see, from a transportation standpoint, are they going to look at widening butte in that area? I, I don't see that in there. Maybe it is, but you can't tell from what the presentation is. So, I don't, I don't see any of that in there. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned about the vision for what happens ultimately. I love this town. We've been part of this town for almost thirty years and I think it deserves the very, very best. And you guys are doing a great job of making that happen. I think one of the items that's very much missing from this, I have a thirty-three-page document here that is my development agreement on the adjoining property that I did with the town. It's stamped, and this was done with the town fathers at the time. A development agreement, to me, would save you all a lot of the problems and issues that you're talking about with the PUD. Most of these developments, as I talk to developers adjoining, they're around us and so forth, coming in, there are no development agreements. I don't know what's happened to those. But that was a very big part of what we did as we went through the process and it was required, it was a requirement of the town. So, I, I, I would encourage you, I, I just don't see this as... So I, I, I would encourage you, I, I just don't see this as being something that really enhances what is happening in a town of Florence. So.
Three minutes are up.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. And is there anyone else who would like to address the commission this evening that's here in attendance? Okay, and we see online Courtney Ramirez, is that your hand up from previously, or would you like to address us at this point in time?
I think she wants to address.
Okay, please allow her to talk. Okay, Courtney, you have three minutes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, I have a few other things left to say. And yeah, I question too, why are we going with a PUD when it's such a small parcel, I guess? And we have been burned, we can all admit, over the years with these PUDs, and then coming back and changing things, or the need of our town changes. I say we all get together, we need to amend our general plan, and all these developers are coming in and saying it's, it's, you know, going along with our general plan. You know what? Our road system right now cannot support what the general plan says on paper. It can't. And the developers, we must start forcing these developers to make these road improvements first. We, we, we should, because we don't have the funding, you know, you, these developers come in and they're only forced to do their perimeter half-street improvements. These neighbors that move in do not just stay within the compound of this development, they are going to go on Main Street, 79, Adaway Highway, 28, they're going to be all over the place. This is, I think the report said over 2,200 trips a day, did I see that right? And let's not just think it's only one or two cars per house, a lot of these cars, houses have three and four cars a house, okay? So again, Florence, we need to be smart. Is this PUD what's best for the Florence, or is it what's best for the developer? Okay? We need to have these hard conversations, whatever you guys can't discuss tonight, these, these are the conversations that need to be had with Florence, and we've been going round and round for years and, and not getting anywhere in a sense, yet these developers keep pounding on the door wanting to come in and build, knowing that our road system cannot support it. I think there was a grade D on, on some of these studies for, for this development. Bisbee still needs to be built out, Dobson Farms is in the works, that is a massive friggin' project. Adamsville, what are we going to do with Adamsville? What are we going to do with, you know, 287, Main Street? Be like, this is, there's just so much coming that we have got to just figure things out and, and be a hard no when we absolutely need to be. Roads first, before these rooftops get built, roads first. And why don't we just deal with the east side if we deal with anything? Why don't we hold off on the west side that they have no plans for? I don't know. Harold, I'm glad you're not, you know, up for this project, many of us aren't, and many of us don't come and talk about it, do we? I'm praying for Florence, I want to put the brakes on the building, we got to get these roads underway, and these developers need to pay for it, not the taxpayers, not the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, we appreciate your comments. Okay.
We have one more with the hand up.
Bonnie Barbiola, please, please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes. Looks like the microphone is off.
Okay, hold on.
Bonnie, hold on just a second, we're trying to get this cleared up.
I believe she's muted on her side.
Bonnie, are you, are you muted on your side? Okay. I think that cleared it up, okay, please, please proceed.
Bonnie Barbiola, I sent AJ an email today pointing out to him that their language on when they make improvements to Butte Avenue, Avenue was very evasive. It did not say when they would do that, and that the, the improvements to Butte should be more than just their side of the street, but what is most concerning is the evasiveness in the way they worded it. So you have no idea when they would make the improvements to Butte Avenue. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you, you speaking up. Okay, that's everyone online. Again, is there anyone here that would like to speak to us? Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to come back up, but just Ms. Barbiola's question there. The traffic study doesn't dictate when things are going to be done, that's just an engineer that's assessing what needs to be done. It's really up to the town to dictate to us what gets done. And my experience, and I apologize, I don't know this for the town, but we typically have to have all the road improvements done before the first CVO is issued. So the improvements are done before people move in. That's the standard throughout the valley. And I'll just mention, just from my personal experience as a planner, one of the things that communities have used over the years is an impact fee for developing community things such as community resources, road improvements that aren't adjacent to the project. These more regional issues really need to be solved by a consortium of different ways, and that's one of the tools that other jurisdictions have used to solve that problem. And so I'd use that because I think that is a more fair way to address this issue, because we're not coming in trying to get as much as we can and not give back to the community. It's just the mechanisms in place are what they are, and we're just playing by those rules. And so as you guys continue to talk about this internally, I think there's a lot of different tools available to you guys to help solve those community problems, so that you won't be dealing with it on a small project like this. So good luck to you on that.
Thank you, we appreciate that, Mr. Davis. Okay, anybody, if there's no other comments, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any further questions, concerns, comments? Okay, I guess we're ready to entertain a motion. Whoever does it, please include the, the conditions and stipulations that have been included by staff in your motion, if you're moving that direction.
Okay, I'll move that we approve with the conditions that staff has presented for rezoning of rural agricultural AA-10 to planned unit development, PUD known as Westland Village, PZ-2436.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of recommendation on this project by Commissioner Lehman with a second by Vice Chair DeRosa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that four ayes? All in favor, or all against, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have three ayes and one nay. So I believe that makes this move forward with recommendation to the council. We appreciate everyone that's here and participated. Mr. Davis, thank you for your presentation this evening, and we'll look forward to good things on this project. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item 6B, which is a presentation slash approval slash approval with conditions or denial of a design review for model homes in the Mesquite Trails planned unit development. This is PZ-25-27. Staff, are you making a presentation on this one?
We will be, yes, we'll be doing a brief presentation. The backup quarterback's taking a few snaps tonight.
Thanks, Andrew.
Do I need to share? Yeah, there we go. Share. All right. All right. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Vice Chair. Today we have a design review for several housing products within the Mesquite Trails subdivision. I do have a representative from the applicant here as well. She will come up and she can answer questions afterwards that you guys may have, but I'm just going to take you through a few brief slides on the design review. So just a little background, the applicant is Heritage Homes. The subdivision, wherein is Mesquite Trails, which you can see pictured here from our GIS page, it's at the southeast corner of Heritage Road and Felix Road. So there's been some plating taking place in this area, Phase 1 final plats, which is for parcels 1 through 7, were approved by Town Council and recorded between 2016 and 2021. Then Phase 2 recently had a preliminary plat approval on February 3rd, 2025, for parcels 18 to 22. Now, your staff report says that there have not been final plats submitted, but shortly after we published the packet, we did get some final plat submittals for this area, so they are in the works. This item requires planning and zoning commission approval per the PUD. No public hearing is required, though. So moving into some details of the products themselves, you guys have this table in your packet, it's part of the narrative, and you also have all the elevations and plans and colors in your packet. So, but the table is just a nice way to really compare and contrast all the different plans. You can see they're all single-story, three to four bedrooms, two to three bathrooms, and then some variance in the sizes there, to be exact, between 1369 and 2342 square feet. These plans are set to be used with all lots in Mesquite Trails, so despite the plating kind of taking place over the past 10 years or so, they're going to be used throughout the entire subdivision. So in total, it's seven plans, three elevations, three color schemes per elevation, and I have one example here on the slide, I didn't want to make 21 slides of all the different elevations, so I figured provide you one example, and you guys have the rest in your packet. So that about covers it, and if the applicant wants to add anything, or if you guys have any questions, she can come on up and introduce herself now.
Thank you, Andrew, and if you would, please introduce yourself when you make, start your presentation.
Chairman and members of the commission, good evening. My name is Michelle Yohan with M Architectural Consulting, 2671 East Lark Street in Gilbert. I'm here as the applicant on behalf of Heritage Homes. As Andrew presented, they're proposing to build seven different floor plans with three architectural styles per plan, nine different color schemes, each specific to each architectural style. These homes recently went through the process, and you guys approved it for Anthem and Merrill Ranch. They're proposing the same product with the same features, the stone on the ranch and the craftsmen, the siding on the craftsmen, detailing all the way around, pop-outs all the way around, standard landscaping, everything that's included in your package. And will you answer any questions?
Commission members, any questions? Please.
I actually just have one. Have you seen the recommendations that the town staff is recommending?
No.
Can we get her a copy of that, please? I'll give you a second to read it before I ask the next question.
Because that all seems acceptable.
So you concur with those recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
All right. First thing I noticed when I reviewed this is that the difference between a, I'm going to, I'm going to use layman's language, or Lehman's language, whatever you want to call it, curvy tiles versus flat tiles. Are you going to make each unit within it consistent? Are you going to mix those types of roos?
So that ties to the architectural style, so just for everything to be consistent for the Spanish, so the Spanish only would get the S tile, and then the craftsmen and the ranch would get the flat tile, again, for consistency, since the S tile is more appropriate to the Spanish, whereas the flat tile is more appropriate to the ranch and the craftsmen.
So there will see some variation right next to each other in, in the buildings.
Yeah, so that'll create diversity, and that's tied to the color schemes, so the Spanish will have three different color palettes, so the buyer will select from those three different schemes for Spanish. So that'll all include only the S tile. And then same, if it's a ranch home, then they're only going to have the three different schemes to select from, which ties to the flat tile.
Okay, one of your recommendations here, I think it's number three, which you just read, it says all utility boxes, backflow preventers, and similar equipment shall be painted to match the surrounding buildings. If you have multiple different colors on buildings near each other, how are you going to determine which one does the backpro preventer color?
So for utilities, that usually just ties to the body color of the home, so it just blends with the body color of the home. Otherwise, you wouldn't want to create an accent to those features.
Maybe I'm biased by where I live, but we have all of our covers for our backflow preventers all the same color. It matches more the gravel that's in our yards. So just a comment.
And just, just for clarification, I think what they're talking about here is your, the homes backflow preventer assembly and faucet assembly not the ones that are for the common areas?
Oh, okay, you're talking about on the building and not on the, not it out in the front for common areas and things like that?
Yeah, this would be strictly for the buildings, yeah. So if you have like the, anything tied to the home, it would be just painted the body color of the home.
That's good clarification for me, so that helps. I don't have anything else. Are we supposed to be reviewing landscaping tonight? I don't think so at this point, so I'm not going to ask about how many trees you're going to have in the front yard, so I won't.
It's, it's shown here.
I know, they showed two in that, that diagram, so that's why I wondered if that was a requirement of your, of your CC and ours for the, for the development.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's the requirement, that's the packet that they're providing, the two.
Okay. That's Atlanta.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions, I'm just nice, it's just nice to see a different color palette than brown, brown, brown. Thank you.
I had a couple of comments, and they relate to the same thing, and that is, on the very last page of our packet is the Gothic landscape design that basically shows what we just referenced to. In that one, it shows the gate location to be aligned with the rear of the garage, where all of the plot plans show the gate that accesses the rear to be basically at the midpoint of the garage, and I assume that the plot plans rule in this, and so if you just tweak your landscape design so that there's no confusion, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do that.
And the, the gate issue, I've seen some developers on their back gates use just raw wood, which looks really nice for about three months, and then the Arizona weathering gets to it and it starts looking just really bad. What's the materials you'll be using on your gates?
So it would be wood slats, and they would be painted to prevent that.
Okay, so they painted the body of the color of the house, that type of thing, or the gate color? Or I'm sorry, the, the wall color?
Typically, it's an accent color to match the garage door color.
Okay. As long as they have a treatment and they're not raw wood, I'm, I'm good with that, so that's, that's great, okay. With that, I'm, it sounds like we're ready to entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the design review for Mesquite Trails planned urban development.
With conditions?
With conditions.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion for approval of this by Commission Member Woolley with a second by our Vice Chair DeRosa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think you got four ayes on that one, Marty Sella.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and making the presentation, we appreciate it. Okay, Item 6C, this is a presentation, information session, discussion on the American Planning Association's Online Planning Officials Training Program, Roles and Responsibilities. AJ, are you doing this one? You look like you're geared up to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you. I hope that you all had received the link to the video for Roles and Responsibilities. No?
I did.
I didn't.
I didn't. Mari, Andrew?
I don't think I had.
It doesn't sound like everyone received the link to the training.
When, when did it come out, Mari, and I'll go back and check my emails just in case.
It was when I sent out the original email with the packet on Monday. I also included the link to the video.
Look, it might be there, and I just skipped over it, so.
There were two links in this video, one was to the packet and the other was to the video.
So apologies for that. As we previously spoke, we were going to present the video during this evening's meeting. However, after the meeting, Aaron mentioned that, well, we're on YouTube and we're on television, and that would be proprietary, and there may be some copyright matters associated with replaying the video from APA. So that's why we sent you the video link to prepare in advance of this meeting. So apologies for that, but Aaron did bring that to our attention. It sounds like we may have had a copyright It sounds like we may have had a copyright matter at a recent meeting over some music that was playing in a video, and Erin didn't want to get in any more trouble with the folks at YouTube. So, that is why we did that. So, what we do have this evening is a PowerPoint presentation that is a summary of that video. And I don't know if you would like to proceed tonight, knowing that there's a few of you that didn't have the opportunity to review the video. So, Chairman, I would defer to you as to how you would like to best proceed, because we may not be on equal footing if not every member of the Commission had a chance to watch the video.
Commission members, should we, is this a thumbs up? This would be a good preview for the video?
I saw the video, so I'll defer to those who didn't.
Okay.
I did find the link on the email. It's just kind of, it's in a different color. I don't know why. It's grayed out.
Okay.
So, do we want to hear that? We want to walk through the PowerPoint? Okay. Thumbs up.
We're going to walk through the PowerPoint. Is that the decision? Okay. So, Mari, could you load that PowerPoint up, please?
Let's see. How am I going to do this? Put your email in there.
You want it from the very beginning or a couple of slides in?
No, we'll start at the beginning. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, as we walk ourselves through this PowerPoint presentation, we will be running across a few slides that are just grayed out. These will be the slides that the presenter is speaking to the slides as she's walking us through that, through the presentation. Okay, perfect. So, this first slide, this is defining who the APA is. It's the American Planning Association. It's an organization that's been in place for a long time. There are over 40,000 members of APA, and there are a number of those APA members, it looks like four in 10, that have advanced themselves to earn their AICP certification. I'm fortunate enough to be one of those planners who is AICP, and I believe I'm on 22 years since earning that certification. This program here is to provide some fundamental onboarding and training to Plan Commission members. As we mentioned at the previous meeting, there will be a number, there's a number of modules and presentations that we'll be sending to you over the course of the next couple of weeks for your review. And hopefully, we can sort that out so that we're all on the same footing when we are talking here. Because the, in this case specifically, the presenter on the video does get into some greater detail and outlines, you know, really what this module is supposed to be. On this slide, you'll see that this is not a one-size-fits-all. It's the best attempt by a national organization to train across 50 states and any number of set of rules that could be applicable to those 50 states, or even subsets of those 50 states. And you'll see here that, at the end of the day, this does get back to local things. And we'll talk a little bit about more, about how we're going to take this last statement on this slide, and we're going to provide some additional resources to the Commission and to talk very specifically about the state of Arizona. So, this is the lady who is a fellow with AICP, who is the one who walked us through the video, a very talented lady who has obviously many years of experience in the field. So, what's a Planning and Zoning Commission? It's a group of citizens appointed by the legislative body that performs both required and discretionary functions in land use. This is a slide that sort of summarizes those responsibilities and activities. Again, early in the video presentation, words are different from state to state. So, while we start at the left of the slide, and it talks about land use, the next statement is comprehensive planning. In some states, that would be called master planning. In the state of Arizona, it's general planning. And as we know from there, we go into zoning, we interact with the public. We had a public hearing this evening. We see video and visual images during presentations, and, you know, we have a work plan, which is many of the documents that we work through. And one of the requirements and responsibilities of our general plan is to provide an annual report of the general plan to the Town Council. So, we're going to walk through a little bit of the orientation for the Commission Open Meetings Act. I mean, I believe there may be some of you who started the Florence Leadership Academy earlier this week, and I believe that Deputy Town Manager, Town Clerk Garcia, may have walked through some of the open door requirements for meetings. We all know the basic elements of planning. Again, comprehensive planning is synonymous with general planning, zoning ordinances, and subdivision regulations. Our Chapter 150 here in the Town of Florence combines zoning, the zoning ordinance with subdivision regulations. Those are all embedded in Chapter 150. Again, the state of Arizona enables us with statutes that enable, so that we do what we do. We may have different identified duties in our charter. We have a code of ordinances, and we have a rules and procedures of how we act and how we conduct a meeting here with planning and zoning. So, it is important for us to become familiar with our responsibilities and expectations, both on and off the Commission. And again, this is one of those slides where the presenter gets into some more detail. So, I'd encourage you to take a look at that. So, traits of a Commissioner. You have an awesome responsibility here as a Commissioner. Our general plan is big. Our community is large, right? We have 60-plus square miles of land to plan. Our planning area is much larger than that. As we hear, we need to be aware of problems and potential problems. And we talk about that on the regular here at our Commission, when we talk about traffic and the growing pains that we're experiencing here in our community. A Commissioner is impartial and objective. I believe that, you know, community interest first, and that is absolutely a trait that you all present. You come prepared. We hope to do our level best to prepare you in advance of these meetings. We're practical and creative, and we're consistent in our decision-making. The importance of Plan Commission members, the petitioner or the presenter will get more into detail with that when you take a look. Planning Commission meetings and hearings are public meetings expressly intended to serve the public interest. They're interested to everybody, or, I mean, I'm sorry, they're open to everyone. As we talked earlier today, affected parties are notified, and in the state of Arizona, we comply with the state statute related to that. And we may offer public notice via the newspaper, online sources, or here at Town Hall. So, preparing for a meeting is, was mentioned, you know, our packets get quite large in size, and we share a lot of information with you to prepare you in your decision-making process. It's very important that we understand the codes, the ordinances, and the general plan. Often, there's a value to visit the site unless you're not allowed. But in our case, you know, we're able to get out there and see most places. I believe, you know, it's very important to contact staff with questions in advance of the meeting, and you all do a very good job of that, and we appreciate that. We definitely ask a lot of questions, based on the minutes of the previous meeting, there were some questions asked. Of course, we're here on time. We listen to everybody's concerns, and we consider really the relation to the general plan, and we had that discussion this evening. So, some of the responsibilities of the Commission. This is if, by chance, you may be contacted by somebody prior to the meeting. Suggest that they attend. We have many ways that folks can attend. They can attend here in person, they can attend via online. We recommend that comments be sent to staff is to better prepare you in answering questions. And again, attempt to avoid any contact that may invalidate your determinations. And I think Council would agree that if there's ex parte communication, that it's important to disclose that, and that it's important to not discuss these matters outside the meeting.
So, define ex parte for us non-Latin speakers.
Let me.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Chair, Vice Chair, so that comment is really more relevant in Arizona for Board of Adjustment cases, which you don't act as the Board of Adjustment, I don't believe. I believe the Town Council does. We don't have those cases very often, but that's when we're talking about variances. If you remember earlier, we talked about variances in that case. When the body is acting in that capacity, you're acting as a quasi-judicial body. Bless you. And so, when that happens, that's when you're not allowed to talk to, say, the applicant about the case prior. However, in Arizona, when, for example, it's a rezoning case, that's a legislative decision. That's something that the applicant can approach the town before the hearing to answer questions. So, you know, as AJ said, this is, doesn't fit exactly, you know, our situation. But I think the idea here, as it applies to us, is just to be fair and impartial, and, you know, we, you know, we're all professionals. We assume that everyone is. If there's a question, you know, you can ask staff. But, and you're not obligated to talk to someone, say, about a rezoning before the hearing. You don't have to do that. And of course, you can disclose that if you feel more comfortable. The idea is not only to avoid conflicts, but to try and avoid the appearance of a conflict also. So, we're always acting as fair and impartial as possible. One more point of clarification, Town of Florence does not have a charter. So, but AJ is exactly right. We follow our general plan, and we follow our land development code. There may be some other items that this slide won't mention when we get into pre-existing PUD terms and those plans of development and development agreements, which is when it gets even more complicated.
Thank you, Consular. Good question, Chairman. Thank you. Next slide is conduct during the meeting. Again, Chairman Frost, members of the Commission, we really can help set the tone for a meeting. It's very important. It's important that we remain calm. I mean, I'm sure some of you have had and been part of very contested meetings, and you have the opportunity to really set the stage and model the behavior. It's important to leave personal bias at the door. Again, you're representing the entirety of the community. And all of you are patient, courteous, and respectful throughout the process. It's important to speak in terms that the public understands. This is something that I continue to work with staff. It's very important that we're communicating in a way that is clear and understandable to folks who may be reading our staff reports, and we want to prepare them. Again, with respect to everyone's time, you know, kind of that whole tagging along, repeating what other people say, and I know, Chairman, you mentioned that, you know, if the comment's been made, we've heard it, we understand. You know, all comments are on the record. However, I believe here that we do give some deference, that if you say, "I want that on the record," it makes it to the record. And then it's to be courteous to the people that may be presenting, as we get into the age of social media, and I've seen this, people are sitting at the dais, and it's a little harder to see what's going on here because of elevation. But, you know, that's really unfortunate when we're not paying attention here, and then people are texting one another and things like that. It's just not, probably not the way to best behave. And of course, it's important to be consistent, fair, and impartial. And again, all of these things will help better serve the community. Folks are coming, they visit us, they attend online, and again, it's just, it's just a classy way to treat people. This talks a little bit about what a good hearing is. It's structured. We have our local procedures, and we follow rules of order, even though I don't think, Council, we directly use Robert's Rules of Order. We may cheat and use some of them. Is that correct? Okay. And again, the Chairman, you set the tone. You ensure that all parties have input. You focus our discussion on the topic. It helps expedite the action and the votes. Our hearing procedures, you know, we follow our local procedures, and we, with Attorney Matisse here with us, he helps keep us on track, and we appreciate you being here and helping us with that. And it's because it's important for us to, you know, really mitigate the impacts that are raised by the public. We want to avoid starting debates on the floor, so we need to respect the three minutes when people speak. We don't want to get into a debate in the public versus somebody here, or you in the audience, and we do a good job of that. And again, very similar to the last meeting, if we need more information and questions go unanswered, we'll continue. Let's have a further discussion. Let's give everybody the time to answer the questions that were raised and asked by the Commission, or those that maybe have been raised and asked by those who, you know, attended the meeting and made comment during the public hearing. It's important to have a fair hearing. That's a responsibility that I have as an AICP planner. I have an equal responsibility to the developer. I have an equal responsibility to this Commission. I have an equal responsibility to the residents. I have an equal responsibility to all involved. Everyone needs to be treated fairly, and everybody deserves the opportunity to make their presentation and to be heard. You know, standards of review, we always work to improve our ability to better serve you in our staff reports. And as you know, it's important to hear and consider all points of view raised prior to making a vote or making a decision. And again, if we fill up the room with 300 people who are against something, that really isn't the basis, right? We have to make a decision based on what may be the applicable ordinances and codes, and again, to treat everybody equally and fairly. You know, this outlines a meeting procedure. This one, you'll notice, and this is probably something for discussion, this talks about the flow of a meeting and how a case is announced and how it's presented. And I know that we've, I believe it was Commissioner Woolley at the last meeting said, "Hey, we've got some folks in the public, maybe we should open up a public hearing." So, this is, you know, maybe a consideration for meeting procedure in terms of how it's read, and it may be in the best interest on a hot night, because I know you had even a few questions tonight, that we may want to hear from the public first before we go to the Commission to have a conversation. Because these folks have decided to attend, they may be attending online, and it's important to hear them out. So, just something to consider as we make our way forward. And what do we make our votes based on? What are our standards? What are our standards for review? Staff recommendations, we review Chapter 150. We may be reading, reviewing applicable plan unit developments, or other governing documents that may be out that are associated with a project. And we, again, continue to improve our staff reports, but we do spend a lot of time reviewing all of those documents, because we want to make sure that we're giving you the best information and making the staff recommendation based on everything that we gather. We may not always agree. It's important to keep an open mind, and it's important to recognize that not everyone in the audience is representing all views. And of course, it's always very important to keep in mind that we should never exceed our authority, the authority granted. And I believe that's it. So, in addition to the PowerPoint, and really, I think it's important, as we do training, to have, you know, to talk a little bit about what we watch in the video, or what we discussed here with the PowerPoint. And really, it's, I think the best way we learn sometimes is to hear, talk to one another, right? So, this first training was on Roles and Responsibilities, and you kind of get all the, now that you have the hard copy of the PowerPoint, you know, the answers are all in the PowerPoint. But I guess the but I guess the first thing, and we went through this, are what are some of the duties of the Chair of the Commissioner Board? So Chairman, I guess I'm putting you on the spot with the first one.
Set the tone for the meeting.
Set the tone, yeah. Exactly right. And again, setting that tone, it leads to a great meeting, it allows the public to speak, it allows just for a good fruitful conversation when making a decision, that's exactly right. So in general, what are the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Study your packet and make sure you ask good questions. And thank you, Mr. Mattis, for being here, because I think it adds a tremendous amount of, keeps us more on track. Tonight was a perfect example, what we had in front of us was strictly a rezone. We began to get off track, you brought us back, which we appreciate, but we'll have more conversation about that, too. Thank you.
I'll add that sometimes we need to explain to the public in layman's terms, some technical things.
No pun intended, Commissioner.
No, I call them Lehman's terms.
Okay, okay.
But, yes, in Lehman's terms. So that's, one of the things I look for is trying to make sure that I understand the material that's presented to me and how it impacts the rest of the community so I can be prepared to ask those questions and then make sure that the public understands what's being presented.
Yes. And that's very much appreciated, and I know the public appreciates that.
And just a footnote on that, because I think that's an important point, sometimes we see a perspective that you don't, we can see faces, and sometimes I think we ask some questions just to get you to further clarify something, although we might be understanding, but there might be people out there that, "I'm sorry." So if, don't feel bad if we ask you a question that's because of something that we see, even though we kind of feel like we understand it, we just need...
No, and we appreciate that, absolutely.
Yeah, it's a great point.
I think one of the important duties is that we remain focused on what the agenda item is. Sometimes we get into large discussions that really kind of steer from what, and I'll use tonight, it was a zoning, is it right for the land, does it fit, period. We shouldn't be getting into, are they going to do this and are they going to put this in? That comes at a later time. So preliminary plat, same thing, it's a vision. What are we here for? Are we here to rebuild it or redesign it? You know, that type of thing. So I think staying focused is very important on what that particular case is, so.
And we hope to, and we hope to continue to make sure that's part of our staff reports. So in this staff report, you saw that we really focused on the question at hand, which was, we were at preliminary planned review of the PUD and zoning. And so, you know, that's what we were focusing on this evening. So we will continue to make, you know, make sure that those are included in the staff report, and we really do appreciate, but we do also appreciate the clarifying questions of, okay, so when will we talk about this? When will we talk about that? And again, we will, we hope through these trainings, we hope through any Q and A or any questions that you may ask of us, is, okay, AJ, we understand this is where we are with preliminary plan review or whatever, but when will we have the opportunity to talk about amenities or this or that? And so we hope to continue to educate and inform and just communicate, just communicate back and forth, and we will continue to improve is our hope in serving you and the public So one of the last questions has to do with professional duties of the Commission, and to give you a cheat, it's on page two of the slide presentation at the bottom right. And again, I believe that's exactly who you are and that's how you present these meetings. And it's so, it really, you know, is, again, this is general, this is a reminder, and it's just, it's good to read it sometimes, you know, because this is who we are, but it's always good to read it. This is what's presented and discussed in planning and zoning and planning commissions across the country, Board of Zoning Appeals, Zoning Board of Adjustments, Board of Adjustments, depending on the state, that we review and talk about all of these things. So again, it's just great to see and review once in a while. And I believe I mentioned to some of you before, this is a wonderful module. Different states across the Union will have different citizen planner training setups. Arizona did have one historically, I believe this was some information we discovered, but it was 20-plus years old. So we're relying on the state, or, I'm sorry, the National Planning Association to kind of give us an introduction, but what we've also been doing is efforting to bring that local experience to bear as well, and what I would like to do is turn it over to Town Manager Walls to talk about a training opportunity that may, will be much more focused here in Arizona.
So Chairman and Vice Chair Commissioners, good evening. Director Monroe has talked to the Commission about training, and some of that has occurred tonight. The town would like to supplement that training by having an attorney come in that specializes in zoning, 20-plus years of experience to come in and go ahead and train the Commission and staff. I would like to ask the Commission, would they be available for that training on March 17th at 6:00 PM? March 17th.
Can you repeat that date again, please?
St. Patty's Day?
March 17th.
I'm not Irish, I don't care.
17th.
17th.
1-7, yes, sir. At 6:00 PM.
So I said it's St. Patty's Day.
What time would you want to start?
6:00 PM, sir.
Can we make it 6:30?
We can make it 6:30.
Okay, then I can go.
Waiting for my phone to turn on, but I'll make it happen.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that. We will make sure that Director Monroe gets this on the schedule and get out invitations to all of the Commissioners, Chairman and Vice Chair.
So just out of curiosity, who's the zoning attorney that's going to be doing the training?
Her name is Darren Sender, out of Phoenix, 20-some odd years of experience. Director Monroe, Cliff and I spoke with her today, actually, it's probably been about a week worth of conversation. Really think she's going to provide some good education for all of us.
That'd be great. She'll have a good perspective of the whole valley, which would be good for all of us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Town Manager Walls. So we will, we'll work in the Department to get that information out to you, and we'll be working with Darren to make sure that we get this all coordinated. So that concludes this topic. What we'll do is move forward with the next, I believe, were we doing two modules next? Okay. I believe the next time we may be sending two out, they may be shorter videos, so hopefully we can sort that out. I believe that you'll find all of these videos of value, and then when we come back, we'll just have a little bit more. There is a little bit more depth of information in those video presentations, and I think you're going to find them of value. So I appreciate the opportunity, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, to present this tonight and to make the announcement that Town Manager Walls did about the next training opportunity, so we're looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
So before you leave the dais, just a quick clarification on what we do moving forward with the concerns about copyright and whatnot, will it be on us now, as you send those out, to make sure that we review them prior to coming to the meeting, then we'll do kind of a quick PowerPoint like this, review and question and answer? Is that the format that we're looking at from now on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I do have one question, the 17th, is that going to interfere with the other training that we're getting?
It does.
The leadership training? I thought it was every other Monday.
Well, there's that.
I'm looking for my schedule in here, I don't think I have it.
It would be a great session for the Leadership Academy to attend, so, yeah, I just thought, I mean, they're all future...
I don't think Commissioner Woolley can make it earlier than 6:30.
Yeah, that's, by one day, I have to be in Phoenix.
So this is the time that she can go ahead and come down, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and make it work at 6:30. If we have to go ahead and divide up for our Leadership Academy, we'll go ahead and do that, but we want to go ahead and make sure this training happens for the Commission, so, might not be here, but we'll have it somewhere so that we can go and get you all this training.
That's why we have a community center.
Possibility, yes, ma'am.
I guess to ask, do we have any members of the Commission that are attending the Leadership Academy?
I was planning on it, but I could probably forego that. I'll have to make it up and get my certificate.
We may can give you some advanced training, we'll have to go ahead and see.
Thank you.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
We'll move to Director's report.
Chairman, thank you. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, we've worked ourselves through scheduling the training opportunity, looking forward to that. The Department is, from moving some of these preliminary plats forward, we are in receipt of a number of final plats that are now in review. So a lot of that work that you've done at the preliminary plat phase is moving forward to finals. There's a number of reviews taking place by town staff and the Technical Advisory Committee. I don't really have much more to report, most of what business we're seeing is a continuation of residential plating and developments. There is some expressed interest on the hard zone commercial corners at Merrill Ranch and Hunt Highway, so we're happy to report on that. Town Manager Walls, myself, Mayor Eaton are meeting with those folks to talk about what their development plans are, so there is some movement and some excitement about that. I know you often want to hear a report on what's going on with Hunt Highway, Felix, Adaway, and all that stuff. That project is continuing, there's a number of items that will be presented to the Town Council at their next meeting to move, continue to move that project forward, so there's a lot of positive momentum on that. Hunt Highway and Adaway Reconstruction Project, very happy to report the progress there. And as I believe has been mentioned, but for the sake of this group, work is moving forward on the Hunt Highway project from Magma to Franklin. In a meeting a couple weeks ago, the county let me know that they had wrapped up the legal descriptions and were moving forward with land acquisition along that corridor, so a lot of positive momentum on that construction project. And as you know, the Town of Florence is a partner with Pinellas County via an IGA on the part of the project that's within the corporate limits of the town, so we're really excited about that, that momentum. And in a meeting last Friday, the county reported that they're still on track for that project to start second quarter of 2026. It looks like our project, the town-sponsored project on Hunt will be before that, and it would be our hope that that project here in the town is completed in advance of that project starting in Pinellas County and at the north end of the Town of Florence. So some really good news to report on that front.
And if I could, let me bend your ear after the meeting, just a little, one thought on the roadway construction, just have a...
Thank you.
That'd be great. Okay, Commission members, call to the Commission. Please.
First and foremost, I want to apologize for texting during the meeting. The only reason I did was the public was texting me to tell us that YouTube wasn't live, so that's why I was texting during the meeting, but we handled it, so...
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner.
Yeah. So the next thing really is just a statement, AJ, that we might want to talk to the Town Manager about and Town Council in the future. I heard a lot of times tonight, when we ask questions, we kept referring back to the general plan, but then the developer, or whatever you want to call the gentleman that was here tonight, kept saying, "We're just doing what your current general plan says. Is it time to look for a general plan update?"
That's right. Yep. Ask to put it on the next agenda item.
You can put that on the next agenda item.
There you go.
Or a next agenda.
Can I?
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, I'll just mention a couple of things. I love the events in Florence, because I'm trying to get people to come to them. Flow Fest is this Saturday at 2:00, and the Pinellas County Fair down at 11:00. ...Mile Corner starts next Wednesday, so I know you all want to go out and buy your sheep, so I'll see you there. Thank you.
I want to go, I don't want a sheep, I want a goat. AJ, the TAC reports that you put in, the staff reports, are a huge help, so I want to thank you. Love to see a little more information, but in essence, they kind of fill in some blanks as to what staff is doing and questions that have been asked, so I really want to thank you for adding that, it's been a great help as I go through the agenda. I asked, somebody brought up tonight, and I know this isn't current events, I'm sorry, they're just kind of current events, 300-foot notice was brought up this evening. I thought the Commission asked for 600 feet. I thought the comment was, "We haven't gotten there yet," or "Somebody hasn't approved it," or... Where does that stand and why has no movement been made on that? Do we need to agendize that, too?
Yes.
Okay, there's a question, we can agendize that also. Also heard tonight, which made no sense to me, that this particular land we talked about tonight was not in the general plan. "No approved general plan for this area," is the quote I wrote down. I'm not sure what that means. Might need to agendize that, too, but... Okay, as you go back, if somebody goes back and listens to the minutes, would you see if I misheard something, but it's like the whole town is in a general plan, so how could that area not be in the general plan? Mr. Krist also talked, somebody talked about impact fees. Again, that's something we should agendize to talk about as a town. Planning Commission I sat on previously belonged to a COG, like the MAG, and we had what they called a TOF, it was a Transportation Unified Mitigation Fee, which... Unified Mitigation Fee, which all the communities put into to fix the roads that we all use. So maybe that's something else we can agendize and talk about, and maybe even as we bring this land consultant, this land attorney, and maybe that's something that person can address also. It didn't feel like I could vote no tonight, because tonight's agenda was strictly a rezoning, and it fits the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say amen to the comments just made about impact fees. And so I would love to see this agendized, and my other guidance on that is, let's not reinvent it, let's plagiarize it, because other people have been successful with it, and it works, and it's huge, especially for a growing community. Notice of public meetings. The public meeting was held, I don't know if it's user error, which I'm going to admit very well could be. I didn't know about the public hearing, but it would be nice to know. So if all possible, I would really like to go to those. So if you'd please include us, you might be, and it might just be user error, and I missed it, so, for tonight. So just please, I think all of us would at least like to know about them, so that would be great. And then last, our last meeting, we had a very good discussion, which was alluded to this evening. Are you getting all the questions answered, so that the next meeting, we can be productive when we come back?
Yes, sir. With the approval minutes of tonight's meeting, the intention is to now forward that to PULTY, so that they can include that in their presentation in two weeks' time, and that those questions will also be used as we update the staff report for the next meeting.
Great. Great. That'd be awesome. Okay. With that, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, and we'll have a motion for adjournment, please.
I'll so move.
So a second.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment by Commissioner Lehman and a second by Commissioner Woolley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.